I'm gonna be like this.
Oh, sure.
I was like, now I'm actually.
Okay, let's get started.
For 32 PM. Would someone like to lead us in the flag salute?
I can.
Okay, great.
Please stand and join me for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to approval. I'm sorry, let the record reflect that all trustees are in attendance. And moving on to approval of the agenda. March 12, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to public statements. Public statements related to agenda items. Please limit statements to three minutes. Do we have any public statements?
Yes.
Do we have speakers? Oh, okay.
Hi. My name is Joy Addison. I'm a retired educator and an active member of the social justice group at St. Bartholomew's. When we organized in 2005, our attention soon turned to the North Central area because many of us served in various volunteer commitments there. And by 2014, when the next steps committee started to meet, we were advocating very strongly for a school in the North Central area. And I no longer have the computer on which this is printed, but I will pass out for board members a copy of our remarks at that time advocating for this school, but can summarize it by saying that we believe that the children in the North Central area should have the same choice that other students in the district had about attending school, that they should have the community building aspects of a school that gave a community its voice, and that many, the students at that time were, many of them second language students who had some academic needs, that they needed a school that could give them the academic support that had been provided for many of them with the parent involvement project in their preschool years, but then didn't continue if they didn't stay at a PIP school. So I appreciate that you are having this study session, and I appreciate that you're considering this, and I just want to say that over the years, many decisions have been made about the North Central area. I believe all of them have been made for the best reasons, but they have all had unintended consequences. And one of the reasons for that is that the community continues to change. And so I would just really encourage you to do two things as you approach this tonight and in the future. One is to actually find a way to speak to the members of the community about what the school is that they want for the children there, the community that's there now, not the ones that we remember at various times in the past. Secondly, I really appreciate that we founded, got going with the Community Partners Group, and that there was reaching out to involve people to be here tonight. Many members of that group provide services for students in this area, and I plead that we will continue to reach out and ask them what services they're providing and how we can work together with a new school to communicate and coordinate those services better. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Okay. So we have a very exciting evening ahead, as it's the first of our new school in North Central planning meetings. So tonight's outcome is to discuss the preliminary design elements for a new school in North Central in order to inform an RFP process. So to do that, we're going to review our history, look at the school in North Central, the measure P in next steps, measure X. We're going to talk about discussing community desires and sharing ideas for program design So first, this is a very, very brief thumbnail sketch of the history. There was increasing enrollment at around 1992 that presented an opportunity to open new schools. This was in a document called Stepping Stones. It was May 1992, and among other projects, the district did open Turnbull Learning Academy. After several years, this was at a time when there were certain very strict measurements, standardized testing, and penalties if you didn't meet certain milestones. After several years, what would happen if you didn't meet the milestones is that you were termed program improvement, and you had to make some choices. The cut points forced a school district to determine whether or not they would replace all the staff in a school, close a school, or reconstitute a school. So we had watched in this district, we had watched San Francisco try the replacement, replacing all the staff, taking all staff out and putting new staff in, and saw how it only damaged the community because people who did care and know the families and the kids then were suddenly gone, replaced by all new people, that it really did not make a difference. Closing the school wasn't an option because the reason it had been closed was the need for more classroom space. So closing a school wasn't a very viable idea. So at the time, the decision was to reconstitute the school, and federal funds were requested to support a reconstitution to a Mandarin magnet program in 2007. Now, fast forward some more years, and there was continued enrollment growth, and there are aging facilities. So the board at the time pushed forward measure P was a bond, but it did fail in 2013. So the board said, well, then, why did it fail? Let's find out what people wanted, what people would get behind. And I know I have a board member in the room who was there at the time, so I'm hoping I'm capturing it, but basically, the board then enacted a next steps process for community gathering of information to see where did people want to go. Because there were increasing enrollments, and there were aging facilities, so things needed to be handled. So there was an 18-month process where they made recommendations for the new school, and they had a final report. Now, I've made, that final report has been public many times over, and I made sure you had it again, but I did copy out the last pages where it's really the recommendations. And it does go into the recommendations for the North Central School. So I pulled those out as just snippets of this fuller text. And it says in the report, "The committee recommends that the district establish a neighborhood school to serve the North Central area. The committee believes that a small 250-student school is the most responsible solution at this time." And remember that "at this time" is five years ago. "The committee is aware that creating new school for North Central San Mateo may result in voluntary segregation," they put that in quotes, "that runs contrary to the desegregation program that the district has promoted. And the committee is well aware that a large majority of respondents during the Phase Two engagement favored moving the Mandarin program to Knowles." So these were some of the pieces that they brought out in their report about a new school. Now, it brings up Knowles, so I thought it was important to point out that they did make some recommendations around Knowles. Next steps considered use of Knowles for these three things: relocating the Mandarin immersion program, reopening it as a Mandarin program, as a, I'm sorry, as a magnet program, or even moving the district office. But whatever choice was made, the committee did recommend keeping Knowles as an asset. So next steps in the 18 months, and the final report then led to a new measure. This one was measure X. And measure X, the language for measure X is right there, and I did provide it to you in written copy here, too. So at the top, you'll see that that's your words that you're allowed for a measure. And then oftentimes, there's a project list. And I want you to note that the project list doesn't specifically say, for example, gyms, new school, North Central. It doesn't say it that way. It leaves it more open so that you can work with it, because you never want to lock yourself into something that ends up that you couldn't do. So it doesn't have it, however, it does have that you need additional classrooms in both San Mateo and Foster City to relieve overcrowding. All San Mateo and Foster City students must have access to similar, safe, modern classrooms and technology, and students from low-income families must have equal access to quality schools. That is in the bond language. That is in the project list. So I would like to have you take a moment, because that's saying a lot, I said it's short, but it's a lot of thought, around the recommendation after 18 months, the ballot language, and that we're sitting here focusing ourselves on opening a new school. So I wanted you to take a moment, and I have this really cute paper that Bana made, and in the blue bubble, you can say some next steps, bond language thoughts that come to you related to the new school. Then I'd like you to share with an elbow partner, and then I want you to share with the whole team. What does this next steps report, ballot language, and the opportunity to open a new school, what does it bring up for you? Are you ready to share some preliminary thoughts with each other? So your elbow partner, are you two, do you want you to talk to? Your elbow partner, okay. We won't touch each other. Actually, why don't you all turn this off, otherwise, it's going to be very confusing.
Here we go. Okay.
So this purpose is to start warming us up and thinking about the new school. What ideas or thoughts come to you preliminarily from this previous report and the bond language and the promises that are out there in the community? What comes to your mind? Anybody?
So when we're looking at sort of our thoughts and the way you laid it out, I mentioned that, you know, under the bond language, in some ways, the language is vague on purpose. You know, when we went through measure V, you know, we all learned that, you know, the ballot language could only be, what, 99 words or something else like that? I forget what exactly it was, but in the end, it was sort of, it's kind of vague on purpose. And the problem with that is even though there was a project list, and even though you go to the next steps, and we're actually following, you know, sort of the next steps, you know, improvements, it does cause confusion to the voters. And so there is sort of this, I don't know, it's not a misconception, but it's the thought that, you know, this is what we had promised them, so.
What is the promise?
Yeah.
Other thoughts?
I would say that there, just in reading the report, I was really, I guess, conflicted by the fact that in the report, there were so many more reasons listed for the recommendation to have been to relocate College Park at the time, yet that wasn't ultimately the recommendation. One of the main reasons for the recommendation that they gave, from my understanding of the report, was having the flexibility to start with a small school. But if you look at the school in Foster City that we're going to, that we're going to be opening, they're also starting really small. And something that was really concerning to me when I read the report, and I'll just say this now, is that in the report, it says that if the school was not successful, the small North Central school on the corner lot, if it wasn't successful, it could be potentially used to expand the Mandarin immersion and add a middle school to that space. And so I was just really shocked by that, because it's really clear to me that that school cannot fail, it should not fail, and our community, I feel really strongly that our community will not let it fail. But I also feel like there's, you know, there's a real history there, and from talking to folks that were really involved in that process, there was a lot of opposition from the College Park community at the time, even though in the community process and in the Phase Two outreach, it was clear that there was a majority of support from the community and the neighborhood to have that original school back. And so I think that there's flexibility in there. I also think that College Park might not be as opposed to that option now. I know back then, they looked at a map of where all the families were driving from to College Park in the North Central neighborhood, and I think, I'm really curious to see, like, what that would look like now, right? It might be, it might, like, alleviate traffic, like, there could be a lot of pros to that. Okay, and that's it for now. I'll let other people speak. Sorry.
Other thoughts that the report brings up for you?
school slash space needed for neighborhood school, and we really need to consider Knowles in some capacity for something.
Go on. Who said it's my thoughts? The next. Reserves? Okay. All right. So in moving forward, hit the next button. It is clear. So in moving forward, there is, it is clear that there was concern in the next steps about previous closure of Turnbull, because it turns up that if the school should fail, so there is obviously a feeling that there could be a repeat. It also talks about potential segregation. So those are two things that we need to be aware of, is in that report, there will be need to address and move forward. However, as I stated before, it has been five years since that report was presented, and there have been significant changes that have been made in how our instruction is delivered, how we're assessing and monitoring. At the time, there were, there weren't the assessments that we're doing now, there wasn't the tracking, there wasn't even an LCAP at that time. And now we have an LCAP and SIPSS that give a process for producing very robust plans to support student learning. So as Phase One Measure X projects are coming to a close, we need to think about how we're going to move forward. And one of the questions that I do have for you is, do we really have the information we need to move the new school forward? Do we need to gather some more information from our North Central families? So if so, what would we ask of a consultant? Because we should bring in someone who is not us to hold, to manage this process so that we can gather the ideas. So what are the kinds of information that you would wish that you knew from the families? How would you want a consultant to go about gathering that? So again, there's an opportunity to write and share, and then we'll share as a group to gather your thoughts on that. to need it later. But I'm also trying to write it as you're saying. What are some of the things that you would like to know? And is there anything that you would particularly direct a consultant, any manner, for gathering Which way would you prefer on this one? Whole group? Okay.
So I would like to go about involving the College Park community and the North Central families' neighborhood, and ensure that anything that we're doing regarding this includes both of those communities, including staff, current families, current community members, and those that aren't aware of what's going on outside of the school. Because ultimately, it's not my school, it's whoever's going to be their school, and so it, I really want to know what their thoughts are and what they think it will look like.
I can go. I feel like I'm having a hard time, like, putting my thoughts into these categories, so I'm just going to talk.
That's okay. We'll put it in a category. Go ahead. Perfect, because.
Just give me your ideas. I'm just making my own path here. Really surprising to everyone, I'm sure. So one of the things that kind of, I guess, ties into, I guess, both the first question and this one, one of the things I feel like is not in the report, which isn't through the fault of the report, it wasn't really the intention, but really around thinking about data and research around, around programs that serve similar student populations and what actually works, which I know is something that we're getting to in kind of thinking through, and will be really important, but that kind of brings me to thinking through next steps and how we both engage the community, which I think is really important, and I think it's equally important for us to work with somebody who can ground those discussions, both with the community and with the board, ground that in data. I know I've shared this before, and it's just because it's at the forefront of my mind in terms of having just gone to a conference where I heard Pedro Noguera speak about a current study that he did where he looked at black and brown boys who attended UCLA specifically, and the schools that they came from, and what were the qualities in that school that allowed them to kind of experience the success. So I think, you know, it is absolutely important to hear what people want, and it is important for us to make a decision that's going to work, because the reality is Because the reality is, yes, we have systems now like our LCAP and our SIPSA, we have excellent leaders at a lot of our sites, and we are still not seeing the student performance that we should be seeing at sites that are predominantly made up of students that are coming from the North Central neighborhood, and, and students that are English learners and students that are coming from, right, those populations of students are still not doing well in our schools. And so to say, we're going to open another school, we're, we're going to do the same thing, but we want to see something different, I have a lot of concerns about that. And that doesn't, and so I think that the point of saying that is that I think it needs to be balanced in research and data and community input and merging those things together. And, I mean, the other thing, you know, I'll say is, well, I'll stop there for a minute and gather my thoughts and let other people talk.
Shar said my thought better, but I was just, I wrote down what kind of programs can we bring in that will set these students up for success? And also kind of getting some feedback on if, if these students are going to other schools right now, what, what do the families like about the schools that they go to currently? What do they dislike? So we can kind of just bring in, kind of look at this from all angles, and then also how we can get the families and also community partners engaged in really finding, making this the best school that we can for the students.
So I agree with Shar and Allison, there's a number of their points in terms of additionally mentioning the community partners. I think there's, there's a real advantage in terms of the location and with the neighborhood and the community partners that we have and the relationships, whether or not they could further be additional partners within the new school. But specifically in terms of a consultant, when you're asking the question, I do agree with Noelia about the data of where, well, one, I don't think, to me, I don't think you can talk about the new school without talking about College Park because I think that, then unfortunately, they're related. And so, one, the data of where the College Park families live, that would be nice to know. What the new school could look like programmatically, I know that was talked about too. Furthermore, I guess, what hasn't been mentioned, or it has been maybe by Shar, was just the outreach. So, so when we have a consultant come in, you know, there's going to be a ton of outreach that's needed within the neighborhood, within the two schools, you know, to the degree that we all know that it might get pretty hot, I would say, in terms of, and very, maybe not unpleasant, but someone that definitely has like the mediation experience, but then also can speak in the relevant language as well. I think that the outreach and a really robust sort of outreach plan that says, you know, this is what we're doing, these are the timelines, I think that, that's really important. Overall, I would say, you know, and again, I said you couldn't really talk about the new school without talking about College Park, but just an idea of what, you know, what Knowles could look like if we did something. And then lastly, if we did the new school, just kind of, what are like the enrollment projections? You know, as you go through and you think about, you know, where the students would come from. One of the things about the next steps thing, which you had quoted, is, you know, it says the committee believes that a small 250 student school is the most responsible solution at this time. And so I think that that is, that is pretty key. But they did talk about voluntary segregation, and then they also talk about legally permissible. And so I wanted to make sure that, you know, if we did open this up, because it does say that, you know, it's going against sort of like our district policy of desegregation, you know, is this actually legally permissible? And so I'd want some sort of clarification on that. Those are my thoughts.
So I would say, being that I am from this neighborhood and that, like this is such an important issue, and there's such a painful past for this community in losing that school, and not just the fact that the school was lost, but all of the kids that left that school, that left Turnbull Academy without the education that they deserved, like there's so much, I just feel like that has to be really, like that has to be addressed and recognized. And so for me, I feel like it would be really important to go back to that neighborhood and ask folks, like dream big, like what do you want for your school? And not limit that in any way in size or in any other parameters, just like what would you want in a school? What kind of programs, not just the academic program, but what kind of, like this neighborhood very obviously needs more resources in, for, needs more resources to address a lot of barriers that they face. And, you know, it's one of the top, I want to say it's one of the five neighborhoods in the entire county that the Samatail County Health Department really focuses on as, as like, like they have a lot of that data, right, about the struggles of this community and what, and what the community needs, and, you know, focus areas for intervention and, so there's, I feel like we would definitely need to partner with them and use that information. But yeah, I'm just asking that community to dream big, like what do you want for your kids, for your neighborhood, for your families? And that, that piece that was mentioned in our public comment about, you know, the community building that comes from a school community, it's so important. And, you know, think about how long this community has gone without that, you know? Neighbor, I went, I went through that. I had neighbors that went to different schools because I had a sibling that at some time before the, the boundaries were changed, you know, my brother went to Park and then I went to Park and, and, you know, that was, that was, I mean, I'm grateful that I went to Park. But a lot of it didn't make sense to people, you know? And that community building aspect was something that, something that they faced that other neighborhoods and other kids in our district didn't. And just integrating all the new information that we have as well. So we have now collected more data on our busing situation and not just like where the buses go and how many kids, but, you know, we're recognizing that we don't even have, we haven't even been collecting the data about like, you know, how often are these kids getting late to school because of the bus? In this report, five years ago, it very clearly states that these kids that are bused really far away and have to wake up early and get home later, they are not seeing the academic benefits of having to go through that. And so to me, when you recognize that, they are only, they're not just being, they're not benefiting from it, and they're actually being hurt from it. And, and like, we really need to recognize that and hold that and take responsibility for it. I think we need a consultant that speaks Spanish. I would love to consider and look at other models, of course, based on data and research, but, you know, wraparound services, like the potential for, like some kind of community hub where like a one-stop shop for families to have all of their many needs met. And, you know, I, I'll just stop there. Yeah. Sorry.
Because you're getting into the next piece.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I was going to add on.
It probably will come right. Let me say what it is, and then you can tell me. So it sounds as if we would want to do very robust outreach in some kind of focus groups, both with the College Park and, and community families and community members, maybe our community partners, so a variety, looking at someone who speaks Spanish, someone who can uncover the history but lead us to a future. But at the same time, as we go to design, we're talking about bringing those desires together with some kind of data and research that shows that the program will be successful because we don't want to repeat. So as we're discussing that, you know, times have really changed, and all of you, none of you were on the board at the time that all of this was going on, it's all changed over. So what qualities would this board hope to see? And you started in, in that vein, you started talking about it, some of you, about things you'd really like to see. And we have some focal points in our district, we talk about wellness, we talk about family engagement, we talk about the academic program. And so I made like, I know those look really funky, those are my pails, like little buckets, buckets. But I was wanting you to consider, what are some of the kinds of things that you would really, really want to see? Because you didn't have any time to dream about this, this wasn't your original design. So what would you want to see or have the consultant consider or have families think about as we go forward? So some time to just write a bunch of stickies, and then we can put them on and talk about the different areas. So I don't know if that, would that get to what you were trying to say, or did I cut you off in another thought?
It doesn't really, but I can share it when we share about this.
Okay.
I think for me, it's hard to engage in this activity, again, without
Tell you have the data.
Of data.
Okay.
Because, and that doesn't mean that we can't do it, it just means that for me, it's more effective to do it backed by actual
Data.
Yeah.
Okay.
Options, but that doesn't mean that we should
Okay. So let's make sure that across the top, we, we have whoever works with us, bring in programs that are working, data that we know, and then see how close our desires can be to different actively successful programs. So let's make sure that's on our chart. Okay.
I'll just say, sorry.
Go ahead.
It's hard for me. I'll just say, I think one of the reasons why that's so important, right, is because all of us right now could have the best intentions and the community with the best intentions and think that we're making the right decision, but the reality is that when the school's actually built, we don't know if we'll have any of the same leaders, any of the same board, right? We have to create something systematic that does not change based on who's sitting here, who's sitting there, who's sitting at these seats, right? And so that is why I'm, just keep hammering.
That's good. So Take one of those pens, maybe take red, and write across there that we need database, science-based, research-based programming. Let's get that down. And then if there are the, some tips, some things like Noelia brought up, she really would like to see it be a community center, it be a place where there are opportunities for wraparound services, and then we can pop those in our wellness area. Let, you want to go ahead and here closest to it, can you grab a pen and just write that on our chart, just across the bottom or top?
Are we doing post-its or are we doing?
And then you go ahead and write post-its, she's getting to write all across the whole thing.
Go for it.
Yeah. Take a big old red marker.
Yeah.
Might not. You just have something that's going to burn. Or then that's You may not. But I did want, there was something in particular that you hoped for, that we would get into the middle of all this. And then you jump up and say, I don't know what I wanted. Or it's not what I was looking for. Okay. Let's start putting some of them out. What are some of the things that you would hope for in this school? I realize that, I think we are all agreed that we want a program that's, that's been pretty proven, that has some success record. But are there aspects that you would hope that the program would have as we go forward? And just, you could just put them down and, and share them out however you want to. I made three buckets because that's our, that's what we've been working with in our different LCAPs and whatnot, but put it anywhere you want.
I remember one of the things that, and I was trying to look up what the name of the, I think it's, it was a magnet school in the LA area that came out of that study. All I remember is that it had a STEM focus as being one of the schools that was producing the best outcomes, again, for black and brown boys in the LA area getting into colleges.
Did you write down then Pedro Noguera's, do it so that we remember and we can look up his study?
I have the school somewhere.
We can look up that study and we can pull that, and make sure it's on the academic because this is what I'm going to take to then start writing RFPs. Go ahead.
The other thing I'll say that doesn't really fit into these buckets that I think is important, and I know it came up as a concern in the committee, and we've discussed it, but really thinking about the integration and segregation component of, you know, our, our neighborhood schools as, you know, housing in our area, which is not unique to our area, segregated. And there is quite a bit of research around the benefits of integrated school programs, and I know that we are not currently seeing those benefits. That doesn't mean we don't have a responsibility to ensure that that is happening at our sites. And so I, I think, I think it may correspond with our academic programming, but I could see that to me would be a priority to think about how to maintain integration generally in our schools. The other thing I'll just say is that this isn't really, this doesn't really fit into this, but it does, I guess it's two, it's two-part. One is, I'm not opposed to College Park moving, I know that that's potentially an option. I will say that that can't be, that can't mean that, the equity issues that we discussed a couple of study sessions ago around the importance of that school having more diversity, socioeconomically, racially, kind of you take any subgroup, that still has to be a priority. It doesn't mean that the school can move to Knowles and then kind of operate as, as, without that as a focus. So I just kind of want to put that out there. And kind of that brings me to, I think one thing that could be important for us to do as a board and maybe with a consultant as we get a little bit more information, is to really think about, more so than programmatic, because I think that could be driven by kind of consultant and research, but values around what are the non-negotiables and where do folks have input, right? So kind of similar to what I shared when we discussed the magnet school policy, equity and diversity to me is a non-negotiable, that's not, that's not a place where we can have input, where people say like, I actually don't want diversity, right? That's not actually a valid place for input. So where are the places where we're open to input and where are the places where as a board and as a district, we say these are our values? And that will drive some of our decision-making. So I think it's important to get really clear on that as it pertains to the school.
Make sure they're on there, if they're going to the bucket. Someone else?
Wait, so are we?
Stick them on here.
Now?
Yeah, anytime, after you're done, but go ahead and talk first, and then we could stick any time.
Okay. So, so I just listed a whole bunch of different things here in terms of different programs and stuff. One, I, one with like the slower growth, maybe start with kindergarten, first grade or that, you know, that part, and just start with that first and just build it from there. So I'm actually going to put that sort of in. The other thing I said was actually have a full-day kindergarten, because we all know the data around kindergarten and some of our schools are not, they're just half-days, but full-day kindergarten is really important. Along with after-school programs, so like an actual after-school program that is, that's really robust and it's not just a babysitting sort of service, but really there's something
Equity and diversity to me is a non-negotiable. That's not, that's not a place where we can have input, where people say like, I actually don't want diversity, right? That's not actually a valid place for input. So where are the places where we're open to input and where are the places where as a board and as a district, we say these are our values? And that will drive some of our decision-making. So I think it's important to get really clear on that as it pertains to the school.
Make sure they're on there. If they're not, go into the bucket. Someone else?
Wait, so are we?
Stick them on here.
Now?
Yeah, anytime, after you're done, but go ahead and talk first and then you can stick any time.
Okay. So, so I just listed a whole bunch of different things here in terms of different programs and stuff. One, I, one with like the slower growth, maybe start with kindergarten, first grade or that, you know, that part, and just start with that first and just build it from there. So I'm actually gonna put that.
For academics.
The other thing I, I said was, actually have a full-day kindergarten because we all know the data around kindergarten and some of our schools are not, they're just half-days, but full-day kindergarten is, is really important. Along with after-school programs, so like an actual after-school program that is, that's really robust and it's not just a babysitting sort of service, but really there's something sort of along the lines of when I shared the, when we went to CSBA and the whole music intervention, the music immersion program. Mainly that whole program, in some ways, the bulk of it was after-school hours. And so, but just having some sort of theme where it was, where there is a whole community there. Community center for the, sort of for the families, in some ways the school acts like that. I actually put down multicultural library, so when you think about it. Family support services as well. And then I put down community ownership and identification, and I think that's probably family engagement as well. You know, whenever we go to a lot of the schools, there's a lot of neighborhoods that, that identify specifically with their, their school. And one of the things is, when Shar was talking about equity and everything, I was thinking about Nicole Anderson and when we were doing the Equity Network, the County Equity Network, and we went through the history of the education system and how in some ways it's broken and how in some ways actually it is not, does not address equity in any way. In fact, it's the opposite. And I started thinking about, you know, how back in the 60s or so we were required to desegregate, but I was thinking, you know, really is that the right way? I mean, you look at it now and you think, well, are we actually hurting the community by doing that? And, you know, are we actually, is it some form of racial cherry-manding? Cherry-mandering? Sort of right, where you're taking, you know, sort of like, you know, when you draw the political lines and say, okay, the Republicans here, the Democrats here, and depending on how you draw it, you get the number of votes. In some ways, we've divided up, and this is back in the 60s or whatever, we've divided up the neighborhood to go to these four or five, maybe six different schools, and because of that, there is real no, there's no neighborhood. And what Noelia was talking about, how different families end up going to different schools, the reality is, is that we, maybe we ourselves actually hurting that neighborhood. And so getting to the point, I, I think that when we actually think about equity and we think about a new school here, I think that there's a, a different way of looking at it as well. And so, that's my two cents.
Mine are not as exciting, but I put excellent and exciting programs that close the achievement and opportunity gap among students, technology and programs that support the entire community, multilingual support for students and families, and strong social, emotional support and counselors.
I have, I think, so I put them all together because all of them are gonna encompass them all. Like you need to have a really good support system to help families and for them to feel confident and comfortable, and then in turn can help their students. I really like, sense of community is huge, and so whatever we can do to support that in terms of community center and everything else that's there. I also kind of, what Ken said is, I don't also want to rush and make quick decisions like, oh, we have to hurry up and do this. Because of the history of Turnbull not doing so good, we, we don't want that to happen again. And so to really look at everything that we can do to make it successful, looking at all kinds of data and, you know, really getting everybody involved to see what they, they think is what's gonna make it successful as well, so.
I just put that on. So I won't repeat what I already mentioned. For the wellness piece, I already said wraparound. Something that I didn't mention was, I know like the Peninsula Healthcare District is doing a lot of work around mental health support and they're, I just feel like that is something that we need to look into and maybe there's potential to partner and offer more to this community and these families and these students. So I'll put that there. And for family engagement, I think we definitely should partner with our community-based nonprofits that, a lot of them are also, you know, struggling from the effects of like rising rents and have had to like downsize and if there were, you know, if there was a way to partner with these nonprofits and just, and be more aligned in that work and help each other, I think that would be not just good for the students, but also good for the community and for nonprofits that focus on supporting this community. I think we really need to prioritize the hire, hiring of the right leader, the right principal and teachers for this community. It'd be great if them, a majority of them were bilingual. And so, you know, you, I know that's difficult to find right now, but we, doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to do that. And then in terms of the academic, I, at first I was like, oh, I don't have a lot to add, but I realize that I do. So one thing that's also stood out from the Next Steps Committee was that, the report was that, there was some info in there about how, you know, the other neighborhood schools like Lead and Sunny Bray and Park, something in there made me feel like the standard for the new school would just be to like, be on par with those schools. And I think that we need to be really clear that we need to have really high standards for this school from the, from the beginning of it, right? We shouldn't be lowering standards for anyone. We need to be increasing supports to reach those higher standards. I think we should focus on early learning and learn from the Big Lift and the work that's being done in that space. We have to, I think that the school should have a focus on integrated and designated ELD as, as like a foundation of it. The after-school programming was also something that I thought about, and I just wanna share that like, part of the reason this is so important to me is that I went to that after-school program and I know how many families were supported by it. And the fact that it's not existing in that same way in our district is also another thing that was lost when Turnbull was taken away from, from the neighborhood. Because, you know, all of the kids that are on the bus, they would, most of them would go back to Turnbull and then they'd be in the after-school care. And so they had that extra, you know, be it academic or just, you know, that support for, for kids that, you know, their parents were working, it, it did support the community in a really big way. I think we should look into, of course, like driven by data and research, but we should consider like a neighborhood slash magnet hybrid. Because if we, if we know that socioeconomic balance is what's best for kids, then I think this is like an opportunity to do that. And I'll, I'll just like plug this in again, if it hasn't been clear. I think we need bigger space in order to really do that successfully. So let's, let's say that was something that was a really viable option. We could, we could impact a higher number of students if we had a larger space. And it wouldn't obviously start off large, but you could start it small and expand it and you'd have room for growth. Another thing is that, you know, we, we know that our subgroups that are facing the most barriers, like, it's not a surprise, right? It's mostly our English learners and our special needs students and our low socioeconomic students. So if you, if you were to like focus on the profile of that, because there are students that embody all three of those groups. And if we were to really hone in and focus on supporting that kind of student, everybody else would benefit. So I, I just, yeah, I wrote, I also wrote that. And that's it.
Well, and that brings you right back around to the first comment, which is data-driven to meet the needs of the students so that they're successful. So I thank you for that. So now we need to talk about timing. So district staff is here to hear these thoughts and we will draft an RFP for a consultant to support in design work for the new school. We'll do that for the spring. We feel that some, that they can do some outreach and potentially have some programmatic designs ready by summer, fall, which would then allow our architects to look at those to design schools. So, so that's a, that's a fairly aggressive timeline, but, and if it, if, if, if it turns out that we need more time for community input gathering and more time to really review, we can always change it. But I just would like to be a little bit forward-thinking and push and see where we can go with it. So final thoughts?
I mean, I think one thing that will potentially impact it is the current evolving situation, right, in terms of how we can or cannot conduct community outreach. But I do appreciate, I mean, I do think that there's, it's a balance between going slow enough that there is enough community engagement and we're being thoughtful and not, not going so slow that you're actually not getting anything done. And so that timeline sounds good to me.
Did I hear you mention that they would draw up plans, the architects?
Yeah. So what you, what you wanna do is design your program. Like when we went for the school in Foster City, the design, the program idea was some kind of inquiry-based, so that we wanted collaborative centers. So the design was created so there'd be collaborative centers. So you want to know what the programmatic design is so that that can be incorporated into an architectural design.
So this is assuming that we're gonna build something?
So if indeed it turns out that you would like bigger space than 250, you can't put it on that corner, and then that will inform some kind of change, and we would have to modernize Knowles instead for a move. But we're not at that point yet because we haven't even thought of what the design is. So let's design and then figure from there, and then we'll gather information from everyone and see what they're hoping for and what's successful.
So my thought on the timing is I, I do think it's, it's aggressive considering-
It is aggressive.
Our latest situations of happening right now and considering that probably won't have any community meetings, non, I guess-
For the next-
Yeah, for the next, at least two months probably. I, I, I agree with going, getting the RFP, getting the consultant on board. I actually think that, you know, the fall or the late summer is the great time to do a big public outreach push and then kind of come back with us, to us at the end of the year or the beginning of next year.
Okay.
Really just kind of go forward because, I mean, realistically, I mean, I mean, we're in a different world right now and-
You know, when I wrote this, we were in a different world, which wasn't even that many days ago.
I probably, yeah, I, I would assume that when you drafted this timeline, it was not, not what we're currently facing. So, so I just, I, I know I've been sort of aggressive on the Measure X stuff to get it done and everything, but this one, I just really feel like we need to go out and talk to the community and really build and find out what the community wants so that there is some ownership and identity there, so. And if that has to be, you know, take two, three months of real, or six months of a public outreach, then, you know, I'm okay with it.
And just one caveat to that is that, you know, like in November, there's three board seats up, right? And so the, everything changes significant, could potentially change significantly, so that's also something to keep in mind.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I'll just say, again, I'll just be very clear and like, I'm just gonna keep saying it, I really feel strongly that this community deserves its original school back so that it has room to succeed, to grow and to partner with community organizations. In terms of the way that a consultant could do the, the community outreach, even in the wake of like what we're facing now with like, you know, not, not being able to conduct community meetings, I mean, there, like, there has been a lot of success within our district by like creating phone trees, we could do phone surveys, like there are still ways to gather information. We also have, you know, the information for all of the families that have kids in our school now that are in that neighborhood. So I, I think, I know that our community and our country is facing something really difficult and, but I also think that this community has waited long enough. And I, I recognize that we need a balance, like, you know, not rushing versus like, yeah, there are many things to balance, but I just, I feel really strongly, like every single day that we continue to let things be as they are is the day that we're continuing to like not give this neighborhood and its students and its families like the opportunities that they deserve, so. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye. So who was the second?
Uh, Udita Allison.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pick up your own microphones and take them to your spot.
Don't touch, don't touch anything else.